All right, I'd like to call to order this technology subcommittee meeting of June 5th, 2025. If you please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. -- Ms. Lowery, I'm sorry.
Kevin.
Salute the flag, please. Flag, please.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, salute to the open meeting law. Any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any meeting. And these are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, may not be acknowledged and permissible. There is no citizen protest, correct?
Correct.
Okay, we'll proceed to 3.01, vote to refer a discussion on vape detector purchase. And I'm assuming it's Mr. Cabral. Dr. Curly?
Hi.
Right, should I just go right to him, or do you want to?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, he'll start there, and I think I can help with questions if there are any, but sure.
Mr. Cabral?
Good evening, everyone. So this was referred back to committee while I was on medical leave. To give some context, we had a trial at the Talbot Middle School for about eight months with this product. It's installed in the center of the bathroom, and it just basically looks for any sign of vape, smoke, steam, anything. Now, what would happen is you set the thresholds from maybe zero to a 100, or they have recommended settings for school bathrooms. And what it'll do is it'll send a text and/or an email to the school personnel. And then what we do is if I went into the bathroom and was using a vape at 9:37 in the morning, it would send the text. They usually at Talbot, they would send a security guard. And then we had, sometimes there were two students that went into the bathroom. At that time, it could be via the camera outside the bathroom, or there was only one student. So most of the time, you know, the one student said, yeah, I was vaping. Or, you know, the two, one would of course admit who was doing it. It's been very successful at Talbot. Assistant Superintendent Raposo was the one that had requested it at the time when he was the principal at Talbot. And knowing what he's seeing and what we are seeing in some of our other middle school bathrooms, we had Title I monies that were earmarked for this. So it is a five -- what was nice is they're getting us a five-year licensing fee. A lot of the technology hardware now is all licensed by the year, so it's a five-year license fee. It's an overnight replacement. We've been working with Verkata for a while now, so we've become very familiar with their warranty return policy. If it gets kicked or dropped, they, you know, they'll replace it. And we'll be saving a significant amount of funding because all of this work will be done in-house. It does not require 120, it just requires a typical network cable and 24 volts off of the network switch. So I'm hoping, the only note that I wrote to myself to let you all know is, I'm hoping that I'll be able to secure these relatively quickly. But with the tariffs, some of the specialized equipment has been difficult to get here quick. But if I can get them here, they'll be ready to go for September. And Superintendent Raposo and I will go around to the middle schools and give a training based off of his experience with the product and my expertise in the backend. There's a lot of extra just information there for your, you know, for you guys to look at. And also, just to note, this is state contract pricing through ENE. They are one of the only vendors that state contract pricing with the Verkata equipment.
So I just have a few questions. Because I do think this is great. I know you've been over at Diamond, you've applied since. A few questions I had was, for one, when the kids get caught, obviously it's a text message, it's emails to the phone. Is there any type of search protocol that goes on with this? Because the only way I ask is if we're installing, what type of policy are we creating to protect ourselves from those things?
So that piece, I'm in the backend of the tech world, I happen to refer to Superintendent Curly.
I mean, I think it's treated, yeah, with the same due process that anything would be. So if there's a suspicion of, then we would follow protocols. It's not treated as a, we know with you, so you're getting, you know, this consequence. There's due process and students have, you know, opportunity to represent themselves and bring others to do the same. So is the concern that, what's the primary concern?
So typically, when a student gets caught vaping over there, let's say you had three kids in the bathroom, and kids, 90% of the time, a student's not going to be like, oh, with me, I was vaping.
Right.
Them two wasn't. So usually a search process goes on, whatever the technicality, they find it, and then from there, obviously you have your discipline in place and how that looks. So that's why I asked, because obviously if you're searching kids and all this is going on, you know, there has to be some policy behind it. You can't just tell a kid, you're going to search them without a cause, right?
Yes.
So that's where that question came from. And the second question was, why do middle schools and why not the high schools as well? And maybe I missed that. I wasn't here.
That was one of my questions.
So right now, the plan was to start at the high school, at the middle schools, because they were seeing more of it, and then eventually possibly bring them into the high school. But I can say at the high school, there is more staff, so there are security guards that are typically outside the bathrooms that are, you know, the high usage ones. And there, it's all the construction. You can see the vaping coming out, you know, at Talbot. I don't know if you've ever been in one of those bathrooms. They're very dense, they're very dark in there. So sometimes the vape, actually, you can't see it. So I know that Assistant Superintendent Raposo and Brownard were talking about possibly adding those to the high school in the future. But we had the funding for enough for the middle school to Title I, so we wanted to start there. At the high school, if we were to do it, we'd be looking at probably 60 plus, just because of the amount of bathrooms.
Yeah, I just, and this is just me speaking alone, I would like to see it start at the high school as well. And the reason why I say that is, I do believe it's happening at an alarming rate at the high school, with the school being a new school. And some of these vape's and all the education we're putting behind it, I would love to see it there as well. Like I said, that's just me speaking. And then secondly was, um, where are these installed? Oh, so like, another thing that I put is, is how are we recording the data to support some of these? Like, how do we know that it's just at the middle school, or it's alarming rate at the middle school and not the high school? Do we have data that backs this up? But I think that's also beneficial when we look at this across the board. Because if we install them, I would also like to see, okay, if we install them at the elementary, at the middle schools, and it's the priest system, all these vaping, and, you know, just to go with some of the educational stuff. That's pretty much all I had to add when it comes to this. But I do think they're great. I know for a fact they work, because I've seen them in action, and I've seen them, you know, obviously help out our security team and decline demonic vaping in school.
What I will do, just because it does pique your interest, is I will have a column for the high school, and we can talk about it at a future tech meeting. And also, like an anticipated cost, the one plus at the high school is when I was involved in the actual build-out, we have spare wiring in the bathrooms, thinking ahead. So that would literally just be a plug-and-play model at the high school.
Yeah.
So I will do some research and then possibly look for grant funding for that product.
Yeah, and that's all I have. But I do, I do think this is great, and thank you for bringing this forward, because I think it's beneficial to our students.
The latest thing, Mr. Bailey's question was about data and referrals. So I would assume that if this is being brought up, that there's been a lot of referrals for the, over the, this is on and over a year ago, right?
Correct.
So some historical perspective on how many, what the referrals are, I think, for the full committee. I do think that this needs to be done quick. And I would say that we need that placed for the high school by Monday.
I'll have a vote.
So we can know what's happening. Okay, Ms. Lowery?
Yeah, and I was actually going to speak about that as well. So as far, I don't think it should just be referrals, because there's, there's a few steps before there's a referral into the past program, right? There's, are you talking about those referrals into the past program?
No.
What were you supposed to talk about?
Student at the middle school uses a vape, that's a contract referral.
Right. Oh, a referral to content. I'm talking referral to past.
Yeah, I'm just looking at contract referrals.
Okay. So regardless, I do think we need data, just especially for what Bobby brought up.
I, no, I think that makes sense. And I do think that when we think about like the start at a particular school and then going across middle schools, I think it started with a, with a request from a principal, like, hey, can we try this? Because we've got this issue at the school. And so that's where the pilot started, and then going across middle schools is a logical next step, obviously, or could have been, you know, coinciding, this step into the high school. I don't know, I don't know that's, like, it's not less of a problem. I don't think, I just think it was not something that, at that particular time, we didn't have, you know, high school principal administration saying like, hey, we really need this thing.
Yeah.
It was a pilot that was introduced to us, you know, requested at a particular school.
But yeah, if we can get the data, that would, that would be great. As far as the visual verification and the surveillance, so it's on phones, correct? It's on phones, right?
It's on administrative phones.
Are they on monitors as well?
No, so we, security cameras have gotten different. So in the past, we've had, you know, the old analog monitors up on the screen. Now, what happens is, it's all cloud-based, so you just click up, you can bring everything up. But what usually will happen is Scott went into the bathroom at 9:07 a.m., they go into the office, they pull up 9:07, they pull up two minutes before and two minutes after. The thing that I like about this product is, when the alert goes out, usually they're there before they leave the bathroom, because it literally picks it up app. I don't, I don't know the vapes very well, but like as they turn it on, it's so sensitive, it's picking it up. So they're vaping, and they're walking into the bathroom, and they're seeing the student actually vaping, because they're so sophisticated.
It's, it's.
I get it. Who is, who is they? Who is getting these alerts?
Currently, right now, at Talbot, where it was piloted, were the vice principals, the principal, and the security officers on first shift had, they would get the alert.
Okay.
And they double it up. It was piggybacked, so it would go to the phone, as well as it would go to their email.
Okay.
I yield.
Yeah. One question I had was on false alarms, but they've been in the past, that technology, I think, wasn't there. But it sounds like they've improved the technology of these devices to other places a few years ago, we're saying, no, they're just not there yet. Is that accurate, or do you have any false readings?
So initially, when we put the product in, there were some false alarms. But right at the time when we got the devices, there was also a major firmware upgrade. So we did the firmware upgrade, and we noticed that Talbot, being one of the older schools, that the concrete was setting some things off. So we worked with the company, we got the levels set correctly, and there hadn't been any false alarms sent.
So guys?
Yeah, I'll be very brief. The reason I'm always speaking on this one is because I was one of the members who was supportive in referring this back to committee. A lot of my questions were answered in regards to data, where data comes from and collecting that. And I can curve with my colleagues who brought up those points. Two, two points I want to hit on here is, one, I'm actually on the tariffs, what countries are we, is it specific products? Is it like metals or electronics?
It's every, so it, pretty much anything that lives in my world is coming from overseas. Nothing is made in the U.S. as far as like some of this technology. So the boards that are made, they're made in China. And that's why I had put it in early, because we were hoping, but I just wanted to let people know, if this goes through on Monday, we may be looking at a backlog of getting the product. My intention is to have them installed for September 1st, so we're ready for school. But we're at the hands of whether or not they get here in time.
And we're going to be looking at a higher price, or is the contract that was before is already?
So this pricing, the quote that's in here is from March, but he's guaranteed the pricing.
Okay, no, that's good. And last question is, and I believe Mr. Bailey was alluding to a little earlier, is health and safety. Give us, we talked about just a little bit about superintendent, if a student is caught with a vape, what is the punishment? Does it go by school, or?
No, I mean, I'll have to look it up, to be honest with you. I don't know, like, off the top of my head what it is. But it's, it's uniform across schools. It's part of the district handbook. But I can look it up for you.
Is it, is it a suspension, or would you get detention first time?
I'm going to look it up for you. And if you have other questions, I'll grab it for you.
Sure. No, this more, why I'm asking that is more quickly of a comment is, obviously, we banned these, this product, because it's not good for our students, not good for the health and safety of our students. And I just want to make sure, and I believe we talked about this as a committee in the past, is making sure that we have adequate training and awareness to students when it comes to how this can affect them.
Mm-hmm.
And I think first priority is education on the product and how this can negatively affect a student. I think that should be first before we go into discipline. But of course, we need to crack down on this. I'm not advocating against that. I just want to make sure, and maybe we just can be provided to the committee on Monday. Just want to make sure that there is enough education.
I'm sorry?
I just want to make sure there is enough education for students knowing the pros and cons, no pros, but the cons for inhaling vape products, either nicotine, marijuana, e-cigarettes, or otherwise. I think it's really important that students know the negative consequences of that. And I yield, Mr. Curly.
Agia, may I?
Correct.
So I'm, I'm just going to be very brief and very clear, that I firmly believe that there are subcommittees put in place for a reason. There is no reason that Mr. Dais could not ask these questions at a full committee. A full committee needed Mr. Agia.
Ms. Lowery, Ms. Lowery, do you have anything on the ENE vape detectors?
I do not.
Thank you. Do you yield?
I yield.
Thank you. Dr. Curly, so for Monday, what I would like to have is policies, you know, we want to see some numbers on relative to consequences. At that point, what are the policies in each of the schools? Are they being enforced? What is that? You know, a little bit of background information. Do you have that for Monday?
Yes. And I just want to, I'll say this now, the fact that we, it is part of our health curriculum. So we do have, and I can, we can send that again, where this shows up in the health curriculum at the middle, at high school level. And then we do have, we can get more information out in terms of like the past program and what happens there, you know, when students are referred based on, you know, based on incidents in the school and potentially there's multiple instances, and what that looks like when students are there in terms of that education piece. So that there's, you know, there's a consequence piece, as well as an education piece happening simultaneously. So we can do that. The one thing I want to say out loud, because I'm not exactly sure how this works, this is not on the agenda for Monday.
Want a clarification? For the, the meeting on Monday, I believe it would be, of course, it would be depending on the ruling of the chair, and I could go any way, of course. However, I believe it's fair game for a vape detector purchase to assure that we have policies in place when it comes to vaping? So, oh, let me clarify, so this won't be on the agenda Monday?
Oh, but is, is the contract itself on the agenda for Monday?
No. I don't believe it is, because we would need, we needed the vote here, and it missed the deadline.
Correct. And the last time we did something like that, it was brought to our attention that we weren't open meeting law.
The chair, I don't believe, could reasonably understand whether we want to do this. So this is within 48 hours of something that we didn't know. So as far as I'm concerned, this stuff could be added to the agenda, because it's within 48 hours in my mind.
My only concern too is if we're looking at this, and he's saying that there's going to be a backwater in time ordering, it's kind of an emergency that we get this.
Okay. I just wanted some clarification in terms, because I, having, you know, you guys saw the agenda and this.
We'd have to get this posted on the contracts for the meeting.
I can speak with Kevin tomorrow, but if that's, we'll have the committee, then yeah.
We'll take care of it, and if it's not, and then once you do diligence, and it's not, it's not. But we're going to make a vote. Does anybody want to make a motion to refer this?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Bailey, second?
I'll make the motion.
Second, Ms. Lowery?
Second.
Seconded, and I would say we consider this an emergency?
Yeah.
So the vote to refer is an emergency of this vape detector purchase. And roll call, please.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Lowery?
Yes.
3.02.
Mr. Agia?
Yeah.
May I speak?
Sure.
Okay, so I'll just continue.
So if it's not about 3.02, no, you can.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to leave. You have enough, you have enough people here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So 3.02, Mr. Cabral?
Okay, so these next two items on the agenda, Superintendent Curly asked me to start thinking outside the box, because we've built the department up, we've built the team up, and now it's time to start getting creative and looking for new ways to use our technologies. So before you, and these are just, I believe, discussion, and we can come back at our next tech subcommittee, or however you guys like to move forward, there are two possibilities for grants. The first one here is the development of a student-run help desk. And what that student-run help desk, if you look through the documentation, would basically be, we would.
Can I answer a question? Just a final question. Any grants that the RFA development corp, corporation give us? Does it go before us?
Eventually it does, yes.
No, you have to start. This sounds like it's from the start, which I like, and I think it's a good communication piece, you know, to do it that way. But is that typically how things are done?
No, generally, if we're applying for a grant, we let, there's communications in writing for that we're applying for a grant. And then if the grant is approved, then it comes before the committee for approval.
I think just, I'm totally, I just think this should be practice moving forward.
Bring all grants to some committee?
Yeah, so like we, for instance, if you all and your team said we would like to go forward with a recommendation or a grant from this, whatever, any company, 1A, all these foundations, we typically get it on the backend. So we're like, oh, we got this grant from the 1A Foundation, and then we either want to prove it or not. I like the idea of it ahead of time. Do you think this is somewhere we want to go to look forward to? Like if we said, the committee said, no, we don't want an esports program, you would know not to go forward with the information, rather than go through, get the grant, and then say, by the way, we're going to start an esports program. Not saying anybody would approve it. I just, I just think the process is sort of the right thing. So I would do a very brief explanation of it in the second one, and then we can refer it, you know, you get the guidance from there, or something like that.
So the, under the 50,000, you know, for overview would be student-run help desk that would start at Durfee High School. We would also have a small, kind of basically the same type of thing in a smaller way at RPA. They would learn the basics of Chromebook repair, printer repair, LED screens, like we have in the classroom, that would be overseen by our techs that work in the buildings. And then we would also try to put them on course to get an A-plus certification, which is kind of the break, fix, first certification that you can get, and then build your resume from there. The anticipation being that we can get some students a network plus certification by the time they leave high school in four years. So it basically just states all that, there's a memo here, and it just gives you some ideas on where we can go, what they would be doing, implementation timeline, the curriculum, because it would be overseen by, like I said, the technicians. And I would hope that at the end of four years, it would be a career path. Some of the students would continue towards BCC, get an associate. Others may decide that college is not for them, but then this also gives us the opportunity to have a little bank of people that we've trained to possibly hire as junior admissions in the district. So that's, that's the overview, first step in the, you know, the grant for the student-run help desk.
Any questions? So this is discussion, but I do think, I mean, I'm in favor of moving forward with it, but I think the, trying to think of what the mechanism would be to have the full committee weigh in. And I don't think this one's as time-sensitive as, so I would say we should give a motion to move this forward to the full committee, so they can give you a stamp of approval before you waste some time and, I think, try to go nice and smooth. But, and however that process works, let it be.
Then I would request, I think, if that's the way that you gentlemen like to do this, the July meeting can be very time-consuming as far as contracts and new fiscal year. I would suggest that if we're going to do that, that we refer it in the month of August.
We can do it as soon as possible, and then you can do it whenever superintendent says. It's just getting before them, so that everyone has a chance to weigh in. This is where we're heading, and I think that's a good way for us to be part of the process.
Yeah.
So whatever that next go, you know, so the motion would be to refer this to the full committee at the next appropriate meeting. And? All in favor? I have also voted. So just for the record, Mr. Bailey and I both voted yes.
Okay, can I ask a question?
Of course.
So generally, so I just want to make sure I get this straight. This referral to the full committee is to, like, we generally, when we're applying for grants, we don't usually get permission to apply for a grant. We send notice that we're applying, and then when we are granted, it comes before the committee to accept the grant. So are you?
I would say the policy that we are not following
Oh, okay.
is that the school committee is supposed to know ahead of time that we're applying for a grant.
But we do that. We do that through, like, a memo that comes through. We put out various.
Your weekly updates.
And then it goes in your weekly update.
In the updates.
But I think the purpose of that is, and it's not necessarily one that looks like this, many grants, for instance, have funding attached to it. So if we apply for a grant for something that says it's going to cost us $500,000, the committee is supposed to take a vote before that grant gets submitted, that we want to go forward with that said grant.
Knowing that we have matching funds or something.
Whatever it is, yeah, just so you can say, we know this is going to cost, this is the reason why. So I believe that's the reason why the policy is written the way it is.
Okay.
It's supposed to be an approval, not an acknowledgement.
Got it.
And if it doesn't, I would say we should look at that policy, because the point of it is exactly what I just said, that in the past, we've had situations where we, as the committee, didn't know that we were bound by, if we got this grant, we now had to spend X amount of dollars.
I understand.
It's a little different now that we have actual money. But in the past, when we didn't, it would be like, well, we'll authorize that. So that's the, to me, that's the reason why.
Sure.
But if you find something different, so if you find that the policy doesn't reflect that, or whoever between now and then, just bring it forward to say, here's what we got, what do you think? And then we can vote on it at a future meeting.
Right. Okay, no, that makes sense, what you're saying, that we can actually incur costs by taking on a grant. So, okay.
So 3.02 is the relative to 3.03 esports?
So on this one, this was thinking out of the box, just in terms of actually seeing my 14-year-old son, who, not necessarily very athletic, but is in front of the computer playing games and learning how to code. If you look at our student demographics, you'd see the same thing at Durfee, as well as RPA. There are gamers out there. So this would be to create an esports program, but not just an esports through the MIAA, which they offer. It would also be on the backend as far as learning how to code, learning how to make basic games with softwares that we already use in-house. This would be not necessarily someone on my team, you know, we would have, we created as a club with, you know, a stipend, perhaps, for the person. But this would all be after school. So when you look at, just in the budget request for this, you know, I have listed as a stipend between $10,000 and $15,000, because this would be a full-year club, knowing basically how long it could take to program and to work on a game. But you'll notice that I have right now set up for 15 units. If it's something that we wanted to knock down to try and only go with seven, you know, seven beefed-up computer and gaming machines. And then it would be to the purview of the superintendent and I to go through an interview process on who would be that advisor. This one, I would want to make sure that we have the correct person in that seat, and not just kind of babysitting the group, but being involved. And something just to note, 85% of kids that are playing video games right now could go on to a college for esports development, and then come out of college with an engineering degree because of it. So it's something to gain more involvement to a different demographic area at the high school of students, in hopes that they gain the knowledge and understanding. We would also encourage these students to take some of the classes in scratch, and those programs to become certified in those programs based off of the esports platform.
Questions? Bailey?
So first question is, which department would this fall into? Would it fall into your department, it would fall into athletics, and if we're not looking at it from like a MIAA school?
So I, I think that it would be a joint juncture between athletics and technology, where it would be, I almost envision that the stipend may be split between two individuals. You'd have a coach, because they actually do have matches where they travel to other schools and they do these games. And then the backend stuff, as far as learning the programs, would be tech. So I think it would be a joint, a joint.
Venture.
Thank you. Venture for this initially, and then we would see where it would go. I do anticipate that this would be very popular. I've seen it to the point where at some schools there's varsity in JV esports.
Yeah, I know it's big around the state right now. I would just, and I've read up on it a little bit, not much, just in my role, but I can do it on my own, but just for the committee. But just for the committee, if you can get a little bit more information, if this is referred forward and then, what? I was looking at it, and if we're talking about some of the coding and the computer and gaming aspect and kids receiving certificates and stuff, would that not fall under like the vocational side of things? Oh, chapter 74, or would it not, just because it's like considered after school?
I mean, I think that there is the possibility for it to grow into that, you know, even as, you know, Mr. Gabor and I have discussed, kind of the visioning like around this help desk, like startup kind of thing.
Yeah.
When we think about the trajectory for some students, that seems like it would be a viable program over time. So I think in that respect, I think it's a startup. I think even when we think about the athletic piece to it.
Yeah.
I know that in general, if you're starting a sports program at a school, you don't just raise your hand and say, hey, we want to have a varsity program. You have to establish intramurals, clubs for kind of thing. So I think this would be the startup of that.
Yeah, and that's what I was thinking, because when I think about this, I mean, we all know the emergence of AI and the direction everything's going, you know, equipping our kids with these tools. It's just something I really want to see built, I don't want us to just buy computers and die because we don't get an instructor. And the next thing you know, you know, two years down the line, we're just sitting with, you know, 15 gaming computers that we're trying to auction off. But I don't, I don't see a problem with it, because I do know, you know, the impact, and I know it's becoming bigger around the state. I would just like to see how it's going to be aligned and how we're going to break things down and provide a little bit more information and insight. So this doesn't seem like we're just taking computers and going to play some of them Call of Duty at another school or something like that. As long as the kids are receiving like some type of certificate out of it, you know, we can give them some type of opportunity.
I'll provide more of that breakdown.
Yeah, no, I'm actually very excited to see this, and I just wanted to commend you, Mr. Gabor, superintendent, for bringing this forward. And I actually want to speak to Mr. Bailey's point, because I actually have personal experience in gaming and esports as well. And just to give one bit of advice for you and making sure this is a successful program, I know the colleges who run esports programs, you have a club. You have a faculty member who is the faculty advisor for said club, and they focus on advertisement throughout the schools. And just to the point you were making, Mr. Gabor, it's definitely an appetite and, I forgot exactly the word you said, but there is definitely going to be an interest in this program. I think just from gaming and just to IT and cybersecurity. So you have a lot of different pools of interested people you can pull into this. So, yeah, I think you're just making sure this is advertised throughout the entire student body and just getting a core group of students, making sure this is student-run, and training the future students who come in going throughout the years. I think you're going to see a good program out of this, so bravo, and I yield.
The, I think that the, I think it's something we should follow in the same way. One of the things that is in here relative to advisor, I think that's something that this district has to fund and not one kind, so it's more like startup they can assist with. But we would have to run it by a club. All of our clubs shouldn't, there should be some kind of, you know, you have a club for three kids, and you get paid X amount of dollars by contract, and you've got a club with 87 kids. There has to be some sort of, how does this fit within the confines of? We need to look at that across all the sports as well. But in this one, I would say, if it does go forward, I would go out the piece of the advisor, because we have to have some investment in it. And I think that's going to strengthen the task for the foundation to be a startup.
I agree, I agree. I know that the requirement is that there has to be a plan moving forward, if I can figure out, so, okay.
And I do think we shouldn't wipe out the MIAA piece ahead of time. I think we should put it all on the table to see how it goes, because this one might be something we ramp up quicker than a varsity sport, as the superintendent said. So, Mr., you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to refer it to the full committee.
Is it second? All in favor? I also voted, Mr. Bailey, is right here, yes. 3.04, meeting livestream options.
Okay, so this has been, so we can get a quick overview. Mr. Dias had brought this to one of his committees, and I'm not sure if the meeting never happened or if I was out ill, something happened to the point where we brought it to this committee. It was referred back, I believe, to this committee, so that we could talk about it at the tech level. What's actually excellent is Mr. Kochman, who has been doing the Fred TV side of operations for, it seems like 30 years now. I was one of his students, is here tonight, actually with the camera. So if there are questions, you can ask the expert as well. But what the request was, was that all subcommittee meetings be streamed live. There are some difficulties internally in doing that. So typically what happens now is the camera is shooting the video. Mr. Kochman will go back to the high school. He'll ingest it into our system, he'll do what's called encoding it, he'll name it, he'll program it, and it'll go back out there. A regular school committee meeting is done kind of opposite, because the output of all the devices are streaming to Facebook. They're also going out to channel our local PEG channels. And then they're recorded as well, and then they're, you know, rebroadcast. There are some hurdles internally for us to do a livestream meeting like this. So now, as you can see, a typical subcommittee meeting has one operator, microphone on the table, and that's it. If we're looking to do a live shoot, just using this room as an example, you'd need more than likely two to three extra bodies. Because as you can see during COVID, we had robotic cameras installed in this room. And one of our past superintendents would make all of his video announcements through COVID in this room. The wiring goes down into the basement. The equipment still has to be trucked in, because at that time, we did not have the equipment to do it. And then there's someone that sits as the director, and you have an audio technician. That audio technician also doubles as the network technician to make sure that the stream is going out live where it has to, and that everything is safe on the network side. So typically, that increased cost, because you have between three and four bodies. We're bringing equipment in and out, wear and tear on equipment. Where the way we do it now, it's one camera, one small bag. Most of the time, the technicians, if they don't go back to the high schools, you know, during the meeting, they take it home and they encode it at home and upload it from home, so they're doing that in the background. Now, at Government Center, and I think this is why it was asked, all subcommittee meetings do tend to be live, because the council chambers are wired as such. So the equipment sits there, it never leaves, you turn the equipment on. There are two people that need to be at a typical meeting there, because one is running the audio side and the other is watching the stream. So there are a bunch of different options in here. And Mr. Kochman can speak to them as well. There's estimated costs in here based on where we would like to have the meetings take place. I need some guidance from you guys.
Okay, Mr. Bailey?
So just a question I have, just for clarification. What would be the difference, and maybe it's the software, whatever the case may be. What's the difference with like Evan's livestream basketball game compared to this livestream? Is it just, is it the software, is it the, because he shows up with the headset and the?
So Evan has mastered the one-man-band technique, but Evan has also been doing this for quite some time. What that requires is a $4,000 computer, because it has to have the memory and the RAM and the space, because it's recording directly to the laptop and then streaming out from the laptop. We're using audio and video input devices, and then he travels with a little, almost power box, because if there's no power, that's what he's logging into. Now, here is the only caveat to that. Depending on where he is, does the internet work? Because that's all cellular-based, unless he's made prior arrangements with the visiting gym that he's going to or where he's going. He's using a cellular-based, just basically hotspot.
Yeah.
So you notice a lot of dropping with that. When he's at Durfee, he's mimicking the same thing. However, our network is so robust there, we have outside access points, so he's able to jump on that way. There had been talk in past administrations of having one room somewhere in the district where Renee and his team could build out the correct way. Because right now, when you do a one-camera shoot, there are no rules that are broken. But there are broadcast rules that we teach our students at Fred TV, that in a room like this where we're cross-shooting, we really should have a third camera, because it breaks the rule of thirds.
Yeah.
So we're really not teaching the kids correctly. Now, we'd love to have more involvement with the kids and having more people involved. The kids could probably get involved, but my biggest concern is wear and tear on the equipment. Also, we, we just open ourselves up to a, it could be a cluster of different, you know, issues to go live with them. I mean, right now.
When he's going live, to his point, when he's going live, he's on Facebook?
He's just on Facebook.
That's it. It's not live, meaning on the channel.
Correct.
Or anything. So I think we have to differentiate between, is that what we're looking for? Is that sufficient? To take the meeting live on, like anybody could probably, if they had the right technology, take any of our meetings on Facebook Live. Somebody could be sitting in the audience with that. So I don't think that's necessarily where we're at, but I think we have to get to that point. So I'm going to let Mr. Dias, who brought this up originally, to ask his questions. And then I think it's a pretty clear direction where we need to go, and it's not going to be that complicated. I don't think we'll, Mr. Dias?
Yeah, no, thank you. And it's the first time I'm reviewing this right now and going through it, so definitely very detailed. To your point, so all three of these options, if we decide each one, will lead to live streaming in some capacity, am I correct? Okay. I'm just going to speak as one member, as to the direction I would want. And looking at the prices, it's miniscule compared to the entire budget. And I, we got to understand why we're pushing for these live-streamed meetings. It's to have the public be more engaged in the discussions of the school committee. You can go back and watch a YouTube video. However, I believe the evidence would show, and the evidence being city council meetings, which the subcommittees are live-streaming currently, along with the full meeting, is you see more engagement, you see more community members asking questions, and that's a good thing. And that's something that I support as one member. In terms of like, I see here like the multi-grade camera streaming, I don't think we need all that. I believe just one camera face, just live-streaming the meeting, it's sufficient for this, for this number. I don't think we need to go convoluted for just our subcommittee meetings, as long as it's live-streamed, one camera facing. I think that that would be a good thing, and I believe that would be with an option one.
That's currently, that's currently how the meetings are recorded now. So it's the one camera, one operator. The only addition here would be, again, the laptop. We'd have to train up some individuals, because some of them are not used to that extra piece. But that's what you're seeing now, minus the live fees.
Right, so what would make that camera go live right now?
So we'd need to buy a high-end, another high-end laptop. We're probably going to have to have multiple kits, because there are nights where there are multiple live events that are happening. So that's the other piece. So you have to also look at scheduling. We have FRG TV that comes in as well as Fred TV and Facebook. So if there is another event happening, let's say city council is happening right now, we would only be able to go live on Fall River Public Fred TV's Facebook page. We wouldn't be able to go put that out on Channel 9, because the city would be using our other streams. So we have to be very careful also of how it's scheduled, because the equipment can only split those so many ways.
And of course, there may be days where you might have to prioritize subcommittee meeting being live-streamed versus graduation or sporting event. I don't really have a strong opinion right now, however, I understand that's an open-ended question. Going back to an important point, and I believe this was brought up by a former superintendent, it was probably one of the only things I support from that former superintendent, and I believe some colleagues do as well, is the, a meeting room, having one room. And so you can put all the cameras, and they be live-streaming. Maybe they be for subcommittee meetings or normal meetings. And I think we need to explore not just the admin building, we have plenty of schools in the district. Maybe we should just have all our meetings at CUS, and just put all the equipment at CUS. Just one option. We could go to City Hall, have, city council meetings are usually on Tuesdays. Our meetings are usually on Mondays. Maybe, this can also go to hand-in-hand when we're discussing having a set schedule for subcommittee meetings. I think that's where, that could be helpful in scheduling purposes for Mr. Gabor's team as well, and specific days and where they are. So I think the administration should look into different buildings and work with the IT team to narrow down on one building for our regular meetings. We obviously can't have a full school committee meeting within this building, and this wouldn't be possible. We have so many people that come in from the audience, we have members of the administration, we have full school committee. So I think, or would it be just Durfee High School be where we place all of our equipment? Maybe not, because there's, the auditorium's used for other purposes, I suspect. So I believe we need a specific school committee room and.
Well, Mr. Dias, not to interrupt you, but if that's the case, then it's already here. It can be done here, we just have to acquire the equipment. Because when we were doing it during COVID, we were kind of, I don't say vicky-mousing the equipment together, but if Renee and his team, I of course will be involved, we can build something out that will stay here. We have two cameras, we need an additional camera on this side. And then the room is covered, and it has the ability to go live. The network closet is right down the hall from it, and we're good.
For subcommittee meetings, that might be fine. We couldn't do that for a normal school committee meeting?
No, a normal school committee meeting would have to be either Durfee or CUS. Now, Durfee is set up as far as the robotic cameras, we have to add one on a tripod. I would like to keep it at Durfee, because that's what it was kind of built for. Might we look at adding that camera that's on a tripod on the wall? Something that Renee and I can, you know, we can talk about. I would not look at CUS at this point, because at CUS, it would be a complete rebuild. The audio system there is ready to be replaced, the lighting grid has been replaced. We're doing it in steps. But that would be a complete wire of cameras and then getting the equipment there. So I would not look at CUS at this point, just knowing where we are with the budget and moving forward.
Pace Center? What's your thoughts on the Pace Center afterwards, if it gets renovated? We don't know what's happening with that.
The problem with the Pace Center, I'll be honest, is the rooms that are left that could be turned into pre-k rooms, the ceilings are so high that it becomes a very echoey and very difficult place for the audio to be controlled. So I would kind of scratch that one off. I really would, if we're going to do, and we're going to set something moving forward, it would be Durfee would be the place for the full meetings, because that's where the equipment is set up correctly. It's all brand-new, we can do many things there, get it back to the head-end at Durfee and send it out to Facebook and to the channel at the same time. And then, like I said, if we're looking at somewhere to do subcommittee meetings live, Renee, we're 85% of the way there here. I would just look at quoting out the equipment that would be needed and just doing those here. It's ADA compatible here with the RAM. I think this would be the place that if you wanted to do it live, this would be the easiest and most cost-effective at the moment, just subcommittee meetings.
And that's where I'm, and that's pretty much where I'm, I agree with you as a school committee member. I think that would be the best option. Just wanted to throw one, I had one more, wanted to throw one more option, I had one last question. So, City Hall, how many rooms in there, like sewer commission rooms? The council, not the council chambers, but the council hearing room?
The problem there is going to be getting the wiring to where our output goes back.
We don't have purview with the city council, so, while the city's started, so I think we shouldn't even bother with that press on it.
Yeah.
Sure, all right. My last question was kind, is this about your funding? So far, if government TVs fully supplied by the school department budget?
So FRG TV and FRE, you know, Fred TV are the monies that come in from Comcast, and they are run together as one. Funding comes in here, and Renee handles the budget and pays out depending on, you know, what side of the house the money is coming from.
So some of the, so some of those monies could go into the city budget?
Some of those money do go to FRG TV as far as where he built out the equipment that is in council chambers, but then the rest of it goes to salaries.
Yeah, the money actually comes into the city first, so Comcast.
So Comcast cuts a check to the city. That money is transferred over to the school department for us to manage both, both the government channel and the educational channel. And that's, that's been historic since I started in thirty years ago.
I'm, I'm gonna leave, yeah, no, I'm gonna leave it at this. I think we're all pretty much on the same page of building this up, the live stream meetings. Plan B, I think we should go to the city and, um, ask for one of their rooms if, um, things don't work out here. But I'm, I'm pretty, I'm gonna leave it at that. I go, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Mr. Cottrell? I, I just wanted to throw something out. I mean, this room would, would be ideal for the smaller meetings like these subcommittee meetings where you don't have a lot of audience members. Um, Durfee is a great location, obviously, for the regular meetings, but we've had issues in terms of scheduling, as, as Deb can attest to. Um, you know, when we have, you know, either choral events or plays or performances, quite often we can't use the auditorium. Um, we do have more accessibility upstairs in the library. And, you know, I tossed that out only because we were there on Monday. Um, and, and we were able to, to do a, a larger meeting. We do have a bigger space there. Um, that might be a consideration, you know, down the road if, if the committee has the will to do that. And I think, you know, Scott and we can, we can talk about.
Renee, is that for subcommittee meetings or just the school committee?
Well, I mean, if the room is set up, you know, as long as it's set up and the, the network is solid and the equipment is there, it could really be for both. I mean, you know, I think.
Obviously, I think building out this room would be the most cost-effective and would make the most sense. Um, one thing I look at as well is the superintendent's time. She's coming directly from a meeting. She's coming downstairs. She's already here. It's a four-thirty meeting, you know, um, what's her day look like? Granted, we have meetings and it, it takes priority. But also if we can set this room up and it's a room that we already have, you can hardwire everything and get things done. My only fear is doing that at the high school or the library, if a wire trips or someone does something now, we're dealing with an entire situation. I mean, how many meetings do you really hold in this room where you're using the cameras, right? So it'd be specific.
Right. I mean, I, I think that the, the, the room makes sense. I mean, I think this is established as like the school committee room, right? The school committee meeting room. It makes sense in that way. I will say that there have been times with some of the larger meetings. Um, and, you know, I think a lot of times it happens with, um, the instructional subcommittee meeting. I think it can happen with, um, um, special ed, alt ed because of the, kind of what's under the umbrella that, uh, we do have a number of people sitting in the room. Now, could people sit there if it's not their agenda item? Absolutely. People would sit out in the hallway. Come on in. Um, but I mean, it, it is an ideal space, especially where some of it is already, um, you know, installed. I think that makes sense.
Yeah, I agree.
The, the money, uh, those mentioned, so the City Hall, uh, the Comcast money was used to purchase the cameras in City Hall? And infrastructure?
Yes.
If we could get a copy of that, uh, what that looks like, what that budget looks like, what the money looks like. Uh, because I do think that the equal amount of money that was spent over there is probably years ago, so it's probably a little more expensive now. But we should be getting equal access as elected officials to either live meetings or whatever, just like the city council does. Mr. Dias asked one time to have a meeting in, in the council chambers to try it out and he was denied by the council president. I find that to be unacceptable. Uh, but we, I think we need to see, throw it on the table of what the money is and what it looks like. I think we should look at multiple phases of this. If this is easier right now, I think we should do it because it's, the infrastructure's already here. But I do think we need to look at a place like the CUS, um, uh, community room where we can set that up as a meeting room, like that's the only place we need. I, I don't like to see people breaking down, uh, all this equipment, moving it, backing forth. Once and for all, we can get a place with the cameras, everything set up, they're not moving, wear and tear on the stuff as best situation that you could have. I think a place like that is where we should meet all the time. If there's, you know, you can fit two hundred people in there, whatever, a hundred people in there. So we should make it maybe a longer-term project to say, we wanna be able to go live from that building and everyone knows this is where we're at. We get caught up sometimes in trying to ease everybody by saying, oh, let's go to all different areas of the city, not understanding that there's a lot of other things that happen and nobody shows up to the meeting anyway. So the purpose of the live is so they can watch it from their home. So why do we keep on worrying about, well, why don't we go to this end of the city or that end of the city? I think we need to have a home and I agree, Matt Malone, one of the only things he said was right was we were gonna have a room in the back of the Pace Center, but we have now something different there. So that has to go away. When I looked at all your list here, there's not many options, but I would encourage you to sort of take the direction from us to say, this is the angle we wanna go in. How much is it gonna cost to get this room live? And then what is it gonna take to get that, uh, the CUS building? And if it's not that, then come up with something different. But money should not be an issue when you're looking at what we need to do. Because it's not, you're not talking hundreds of thousands of dollars on any of these proposals. So money, we have money. The government, the Comcast has money. Or, you know, it's not unlimited, but there is money for that. So.
So, um, just what I'll, what I'll do is I'll sit down with Renee, um, and Alex, who really is kind of the, the engineering side of this, and we'll look at what's here. We'll look at what's needed, um, and we'll provide that to the committee. Um, it's the busiest time of the year right now for Fred TV with graduations and events. So it'll take us a little bit of time to get a list together. Uh, we'll get a list together, but I could anticipate, um, knowing that July is a slower month for Alex and Fred TV that we could do the build-out in July in the room and be ready for subcommittee meetings moving forward to be live in this location. Um, and then, um, like you said, long-term, we will, um, have, that's something that a company's gonna have to come down to do, a vendor, because we probably have to have some piping done and have cameras installed robotically so that they're not always in a way that can just be turned on from that back area where the kitchen is. We'll figure out a way to, to work the, the CUS area and I'll get Mr. Pacheco involved in that. Cause, um, you know, that sounds like something that some of his crew could help us with. Um, so what we'll do is we'll plan for this to be a go for September one, but we'll give you the pricing, we'll show you what it looks like. And then long-term, um, by September, Octoberish, we should have a long-term plan in place um, as far as what it looks like money-wise and moving forward for the CUS community.
Two, just, thank you. Just two final points. Um, one on, on the money issue, I believe it's, um, twenty-five or thirty thousand. If it's below that, does not have to come before the school committee. So I think this, um, that, I mean, we never sent any contracts below that in the past. So I believe, um, just, um, taking the guidance today and just going forward, like you said, on September first, I think it's sufficient unless there, unless it requires school committee approval on the contract. It's over that certain threshold. I don't know the number off the top of my head. Um, just wanted to get one final clarification, unless I misunderstood you, Superintendent, on the, um, when you're speaking about individuals coming out and coming in, were you speaking about a full committee meeting or subcommittees?
Subcommittee.
Okay. There you go. I go.
So I think the, um, thing that we have to do is get this to the full committee as well. So for the same reason as before, that we don't, we are only the subcommittee. But we have to get this to the committee for the purposes of saying that we want one subcommittee room and one school committee room. Because if, if the committee doesn't agree to that, then don't waste your time trying to do all this work. So I think, uh, I'd look for a motion to refer this to the full committee to let them know where we're at. What we recommended was one of each and to let them just say yes or no. And then we can go from there. If it takes six months, it takes six months. But I don't want you doing work that, once you get it all done, now everybody's gonna say, oh, no, I wanna have a meeting at such and such school. Right, okay. So it's just gonna give you direction and not have you waste your time. So motion's made by Mr. Bailey, seconded by myself. All in favor, I oppose. So, all right. Thank you very much. Oh five, Comcast redundancy connection?
So this was just an FYI for you, uh, at the table. Uh, I've been talking about this, um, for quite some time, um, at looking at a redundant connection for the district, knowing how important the internet is. Um, we had a couple of instances over the past years. I will say, knocking on wood, that Lightspeed, which is our main internet, ISP, has been phenomenal. They've been one of the best, um, providers that we've ever worked with. Um, however, Comcast has come a long way in the city with their backbone. And what I've done, um, is I've installed a redundant connection at the Durfee head end and it'll, it'll be used for a twofold. Um, when there's an outside event, um, a lot of the event people wanna use our internet and that is something that we have to stop because it's an issue for our network for very, you know, on a security-based reasons. So we're gonna install that Comcast connection. So if there's a dance recital, they'll be given the username and password to the Comcast connection. Um, and they won't be touching our school network. Um, anything on the outside that comes in to do a presentation, Superintendent Crowley has a software company in, they would be given connection to the outside world via the Comcast and not our internal. But it's twofold now. So now let's say there's an issue with Lightspeed and Lightspeed goes down. We're in the middle of MCAS, but the click of a button, we can go over and I can divert all traffic out of the Comcast one. And when I do that, it takes all of the secure functionality of Chromebooks and everything with it. So now we have a, so instead of being down for three hours, we're down for three tenths of a second. Um, that's at the cost of about eighteen hundred bucks a month. It is not eratable, um, just because it's a redundant connection. However, um, I have a line item in my budget that I use utilities, but it's really not. It's cell phones and such, so that's where it'll fit in. Um, so I just wanted to give you all an update that the Comcast connection is up. It's been finalized, um, and we are starting to do initial testing. And for this recital season, we'll start using it, which is already started.
Any questions? Mr. Dias?
Just, just one question, um, and, you know, a lot of this is, um, your, your wheelhouse. So a lot of this, um, I'm just gonna go take, take you at face value for it. Um, just one question on cost for, um, for extra, for companies that come in. Like you mentioned dance recital, for example. Um, I just received a bill, um, from one of these dance companies and I saw the bill and I, my head was gonna explode. Is there going to be a specific extra cost to, um, outside organizations who, um?
There is built into the building use, um, pricing matrix. Um, it's already there. Um, a lot of them opt not to use it because they'll use a hotspot. Um, but they're charged for the AV usage as far as the teleprompter and everything. So they tend not to use it because, um, we have so many strongholds on our network that they can't get to what they need to get to. So this will be an option for them now to say, we do have an internet connection that you can get out to to get your graphics and then they would probably pay for it at that point.
Okay. Um, just wanted to advise, um, just going through, um, the school use policy, there is language within the school use policy that states that any fees are supposed to be regularly reviewed by the school committee. And I don't recall reviewing the fees since I joined this committee. So I just wanted to bring that to the administration's attention. I just wanna make sure.
Thank you for your team, uh, Charlie, before you, uh, cut on that. Over the last two years, we've had, um, an update to that. So we could probably just get a copy of that for you to, to look at. But it's good to regularly look at it. Um, I think we regularly looked at it because turf fields, repairs were the issue. So use of schools and whether are we actually expending money or are we just allowing somebody to use our facilities? So that's where, uh, there is a pretty good sum of money in, in that account right now. So if we need something, we can purchase it without taking out the budget. So we can definitely get that to you.
Thank you.
And I thank you for your work on that. I think it sounds, it sounds like a plan for me. Uh, three oh six, summer project, the list.
So this was just an FYI as well. Um, I know Mr. Aguirre likes to keep his, uh, you know, keep a pulse on what's happening in technology. I broke it down into the main categories of infrastructure, networking, device management, telecom, phones and audio systems, security systems, staff support and onboarding and strategic projects and special initiatives. The list is quite long. Um, there is of course a, um, rating system here of what are more, um, not saying more important, because everything is important for our staff and students, but stuff that is, um, priority one. And then the remainings, um, on the list will be continued into early fall. Uh, we never stop in technology anyway, but this was just to give you an example of what we have on track coming up for the summer season.
Any questions?
Yes. So this, um, this pace cleanup with the, um, the cabling and this, this already took place?
No, no, this is all stuff to happen this summer.
That's going to happen this summer. Um, and for the pace one, when, do you have a date when you're looking to start there? Would that be more of like a Pacheco question?
No, no, that, that's me. So that's, so, just so we're clear, that's not above the ceiling wiring. This is just our network room. Um, in the past, well before my time, they used to use eight-foot patch cables, which is a strain on the equipment as well as the jacks. No, no, in the actual network closets. So they get replaced with one-foot cables. Everything is nice and neat. Um, that's all that means.
I, I, I just recommend because it will be on the agenda for Monday that we're, um, receiving an update on, on ARPA funds for the Pace Center. And it's supposed to be more than just for the roof. It's supposed to be more of a, more comprehensive project for many different things. So I just wanted to say, maybe save your bills and see if, um, you don't have to go through your own technology budget. See if you can go through, um, ARPA funding. Just wanted to throw, throw that out there.
And just for your adification, Mr. Dias, this is not, this would not be a cause to us. Um, the cabling that we're using, um, I actually got, um, probably about sixty percent of it donated from UMS Darmstadt. They were getting rid of the cabling. Um, so this is just technically my OCD needing to clean the closet and make sure all the wires are the same size.
Move point, then. Thank you.
I think, uh, when it comes to some of the graphics, I, I like to get these updates quarterly so we don't have to go over the list. But I think by listing them makes us, makes you, makes the superintendent, makes everyone on the same page. This is what needs to be done by this time. And I think we've been pretty good with, when we say we're gonna do something, we do it. We had meetings about, about security cameras, things like that, that the committee, subcommittee and the full committee expect that when something's gonna get done, it's gonna get done. If it doesn't get done, then somebody's gonna let us know we couldn't get the material in. And I think that's some of the oversight that the subcommittee do. I, I think it's a good thing you have a busy, uh, you know, summer here. For the other members, I just wanna make sure that when we look at the trajectory of staffing of where we've been for the last five years, let's say. Mr. Cabral has received a lot of, uh, additional staff that is needed because of what we're dealing with. So it isn't a cost outside. When we say a cost and we add a position, or we have somebody that's in this industry that we need to have experience and, and that, that costs money. But it's valuable because we're not paying somebody else to do every single thing we want. So just keep that in mind that these positions are technical, highly technical, and they cost money. Well, we're, we're saving money by having them. So just as we go forward, please understand that they're, they're doing the best they can with what they have. But at some point, we have to pay real money to get real quality workers.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just one final question, um, because I know this has been, um, brought up in the past with the committee. Could you speak, um, briefly just on the expanded board docs usage? Is that for maybe the school committee?
Say that again, Mr. Dias. I didn't understand.
Oh, no worries. The, um, it's under staff support, onboarding and documentation, activate new website and board docs features.
Okay, so, um, the new website is gonna be activated in the coming weeks. It's been a very long process.
For the district?
For the district. Um, basically a theme change, getting rid of some of the minutia stuff that doesn't need to be there, making it a little more user-friendly for staff, students, families, all, you know, um, and then board docs. I know that's been a, a vote of contention with, um, some members on the committee. Um, I was not the person that made the initial purchase on that. That was made in a former administrat, you know, administration. However, um, in talking with many districts out there, it is definitely the tool of choice. It is not owned by MASC anymore. It's owned by a company called Diligent. Um, and it is gonna be my recommendation that we continue to move forward with them uh, because there are many more features that Diligent, the company, is going to offer. I was actually speaking with Mrs. Cabral earlier. Um, and one of the things that's great is, um, there's a transparency feature where when you click on school committee now, it brings you to the board docs page where you can navigate through past meetings, you can navigate through the agendas. The big piece for me is you can actually now, when the meeting is live, it's gonna actually show on the side of the screen the agenda and where we are on the agenda as to what's being spoken about. And it'll do subtitling for people that need the subtitling. So when we're live, there's another avenue for someone to watch it. So it's not just Facebook. Part of our board docs yearly cost, we now have this option. So that school committee page is gonna look different as well. Um, and the thing that is very important to me after what we've gone through this year is the security of our documents. Um, they're backed up in three separate locations with Diligent, all offsite and cloud-based. So that way, if something were to happen here locally, we have backups of everything that. So that way, if something were to happen here locally, we have backups of everything that Ms. Cabral has done historically for her time here. And anyone else that has used board docs as the administrator. That's something for a different day. I did not put that on this agenda because we still were conversing back and forth. And I was just able to, after coming back from medical leave, sit down in the past few days with that vendor. But that would be something that I'll be bringing to the full committee in the coming months to discuss.
No, I'm glad, I'm glad you're on top of it. And last comment I'm going to say and I'm going to, I'm going to yield is, on the website, and I'm just going through a few different district websites. On another topic I brought up earlier is the tip line. I think it's important that we have, as a district, a tip line, maybe either a phone number or an email to put on the website to report whatever the issue is. It could be something internal for HR. It could be something a parent wishes to bring forward if there's an issue in the classroom. But I know different districts, like in the South Coast, have the tip line. I might, I think I might have shared it with you some of it in the past. So if not, I'll make sure to share it. Some near Boston. So it's something actually that's a common trend among districts that I believe would be beneficial for Florida public schools. And I yield, Mr. Chair.
We can add one page on what we do offer. I think there's some variation of what Mr. Dias is talking about. So we are all on the same view.
For a tip line?
Tip line or like informational at this place, like if you have a concern, you know, relatives that are asking. There's, there's places that we, so it's not like we're doing nothing. We could maybe improve that possibility.
Just on board docs, and I'll say at first, I don't use it. I'm not a fan, but I'm not opposed to seeing what else the application does. But some of the things that you're talking about, I think also we need some information on that. Because some of the things you're talking to do pique my interest. I know that I sit at meetings sometimes and I look down the stage and the staff, you know, saying, "I talked about this in this meeting." If I can reference some of that stuff and pull it off, I think it would be helpful too for some of the things that school committee members are talking about, just so we can reference. Or if the superintendent is making a certain point, I think it would be beneficial. Because I'll be honest, I'm one member who didn't support it. It was like, "Let's just get rid of it because I don't use it." I'm not opposed to looking into it. But if we're not using it, I do think it's a waste of funding. So I, I would like to explore.
And, and just, just to, just to further expand on that for a moment, the idea behind that software is actually pretty neat because it's recommended for an iPad. So we would take back the Chromebooks that you guys use, give you all iPads. You'd have your district email on there with a keyboard. But in the meeting, you can actually follow along in a meeting by swiping across to the left and it will keep you up. Or you can put it in what's called guided meeting mode. I'm at most meetings and I can keep up and I can swipe and it will move all your iPad screens for you. So you have that option if you want it. And then there's also that Ctrl F feature. So like you said, if there was something that was said at an April 11 meeting, you type in April 11, you type in the word, it finds it for you.
Yeah, I just think it's, it's great for a reference. Like I said, if I'm looking down the stage and Mr. Aguirre is talking about something or the superintendent is talking about something, it's always great. I find myself on my iPad typing notes and then I'm going back and I can't find something and, you know, I'm jumping through. But it, it, it just makes, it streamlines what we do.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask. Is there, is there a feature where people can take notes, like in, with, like in their board doc account?
Yes, in their system, yes. In the update, this Diligent software company that bought them there, a huge software company. They have their feet in many different places. But I was quite amazed at what their updates were.
Mr. Dias.
Just very quickly on, on one point, I guess, just hearing that for the first time as one member, it's not personally in support of giving the Chromebook for an iPad. I think just for, I think we need to be, just for some of the different, same arguments I gave for the meals that we receive, I think we need to lead by example. It'd be frugal and there's just, this is just first glance, maybe, but I know, I know there's some arguments that can be made that it'd be better to keep track during the meeting. However, I guess if we're getting iPads, maybe get cheaper ones.
Well, actually, I can tell you that right now, they're about 30% cheaper than a typical Chromebook that you have. And they're already in house, so it's not a cost they would purchase to use. And I have some set aside because my plan was to go to iPads for you guys because it makes it easier and the batteries last longer. So there's actually a cost savings in using the iPads over the Chromebooks.
All right. Just make sure we have that in writing because I, I know what people could say out there, so I think it's important.
No problem.
Thank you.
The only comment I would make is that I, I've not been a fan of board docs, but I also don't think we've done anything that they've told us they were going to do back when they came in. So I would encourage you as, sort of like you're taking the lead on this, I guess, is to go back, look at the meetings, figure out what they actually said when we bought board docs. We haven't done 10% of what they said it was going to do, so that's why it's not usable. You know, it's a waste of time. I'd rather have a Google Doc where I can actually see something, or I can search my own minutes. I, I send things to Ms. Cabral all the time. Can you search this for me? Because I don't have access to, you know, find a word or go to find these things. So I have to ask her, that she's got to go through the things and attach them because we're looking at PDFs on the site and you can't search a PDF in that way. You know, it's like a different type of thing. I don't have all the software. But ultimately, go back and look, please, what they said they were going to do. And if it's $15,000 for that, I'm not in favor. You come back and say, "This new company has this and there's a feature," great. But if it's not going to be worth the $15,000, I'm still not going to be in favor. So.
Understood.
Anybody have any new business? I, just on the new business, the only thing was a few months ago, we had an issue with security cards. We had a lockdown situation. I don't want to necessarily get into the, that discussion, but my recollection is that in the past, we've had people all over, like who's in charge, so we don't know who to go with. You say, "This is your thing." Now, my recollection was that prior to you being superintendent, Mr. Cabral was in charge of the security cards. So the access, like the doors, the, so we didn't have, well, he's doing one part, you're doing another part, you're doing one part. So we, at whatever time, directly found out. We said, "The point person on security doors and the swipe cards is him." And I just want to make sure that that's still happening. Because when the incident happened, I don't think it, I was starting to get, "Oh, this one was doing it, that one was doing it, this one." We started to hear different things than I thought it would have been. Cabral's the CIO. He's the security card guy. Everything goes through him. So I would say, "Why did that?" I'm not asking for the answer, but be simple. Mr. Cabral, how does this happen?
We can talk offline on that. It was actually just a human error. It was nothing drastic at all. It was a, a human error.
But I'm saying, are you in charge of the security and the front doors everywhere?
So what happens right now is I'm the one that programs the doors. I'm the one that makes sure the schedules are intact based off of what Superintendent Curly and Mr. Pacheco, as far as staff members in and out. And then there are for student IDs, which have no, they're just a blank card. They're printed in their respective grade level office and are at the schools. And then staff cards are printed. But once staff cards are printed on the proxy card, I have to go in and activate all of that. So they have access to print the card, but I'm still activating it.
And any decisions on doors, security cameras and something? Are you in charge of that or not?
I work directly with Mr. Ventura.
Who's in charge of it?
I am in charge of the cameras. Mr. Ventura will call and say, "Hey, is it possible to change that view?" And then what we do is we talk about it. If we agree that the view should be changed, then my technician that does the cameras will go and change the view.
But the bottom line is you're in charge.
I am.
During that time, I don't think that was the case for, for what it's worth.
That's one, one, not, not to that point, but I'm just have one question for new business that I asked a few months prior and I believe it's technology related. So when Derby High School, the scanning devices, the magnetometers.
The Evolve system?
Yes.
Yeah. So what, what exactly is it searching for? Metal?
So, and just so we're clear, that is a Mr. Pacheco and Mr. Ventura piece. But I can speak to the fact that it's looking for metal and it's looking objects that are in the shape of a weapon. There are changes in the software coming up over the summer and they're constantly updating things. But a specific question to that nature, you would be better off in facilities with Mr. Pacheco or Mr. Ventura. Just because my plate was becoming so full that actually Superintendent Curly was nice enough to move that piece to Mr. Pacheco and Mr. Ventura, which has been great. So they would have the answers you need on that.
I would say forward that email. I think you send an email every now and again. So if you can just send one to the superintendent with that specific question so that she can get the answer and then send it out to the full committee.
Sure. And I would say, I, just for the record, I, I'm going to yield, I have concerns over the system. Either it concerns how we use it for outside of school hours and I'm concerned that, I believe the committee has heard from students before. But I'll yield at that for now. Thank you.
Not here. And then you have a new business. 5.01 is a request for executive session for the purposes of Mass General Act 38, section 2184, to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect thereto. I'd like to make, have a motion made to go into executive session.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Bailey made, Mr. Aguirre second. All in favor? I. Both so voted.
Mr. Chair, I recommend, I believe.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Ms. Lawrie is absent.
So we're in executive session. Okay, we're going to reconvene this subcommittee meeting. Local call, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Ms. Lawrie.
You have a motion to adjourn. Mr. Bailey makes a motion to adjourn. Mr. Aguirre seconded. Local call.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yeah.
Ms. Lawrie.
Thank you all very much. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.